October 8th, city council meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, well, thank you everybody for coming out. I know we've got a couple of proclamations on the agenda and a couple of agenda items that we'll need to discuss. So I'm glad everyone was able to show up for it. Does anyone have any comments they want to talk about? City manager's comments?
I think I said enough yesterday.
You good? Alright, matters to be presented by the public non-agenda items. We've got a couple of people. Jack Johnson.
My name's Jack Johnson. I live at 201 Sunrise Street. Me and my neighbors were wanting to know how to get a new city ordinance or code on the books. If somebody could tell us how, we'll do the legwork and get it done. But we just need to do that. And also, the neighborhood told me to make sure that we said, Chad Osborn is doing a great job. Y'all need to support him and help him in every way. And he is doing a good job.
I agree with you certainly. Do you want to address the ordinance?
Sure, I mean, really, I think we talked about this the day I was out riding with you. One, I need to know exactly what you proposed to change to the ordinances. And then depending on what that change is, it may have to go through the planning commission or through zoning as well. So we'll just have to take a look and see exactly what you want changed and we'll take it from there.
And you just need to sit down and figure it out and then I can go out to the neighborhood and get support again.
Well, I mean, and there's also state code that we have to follow too. Because there may be something that you want to have in force and effect but the state doesn't allow us to regulate.
Right.
There's things that we just have to look at as a whole to determine whether or not that would be an appropriate ordinance.
Okay. That's all I've got to say tonight. But like I said, the people are wanting the place cleaned up. And like I said, Chad is doing a good job.
He is.
He's really doing it. And I'll tell you, Mike Martin, I meet at the landfill. Son, you got a problem, he's right there. He's doing a great job.
It's not often they get good compliments and we appreciate you coming down and saying that. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Alright, next for non-agenda is Ms. Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a property owner. The city of Bristol, Virginia is in crisis. The city of Bristol, Virginia is in a financial crisis. This crisis has been acknowledged and validated by the state of Virginia, by Moody's Investment in New York City, who was prepared to demote us to junk bond status, and also by the most prestigious oldest bonding company in Richmond, in the state of Virginia, which is in Richmond. And it's the city's bonding company. I have some figures here that were correct as of October 4th, 2019. They came from the Chief Financial Officer's office in Bristol, Virginia. Number one, the total bonded debt in the general fund is $72,308,210. That's the total bonded debt in the general fund. The payoff is 2043. That's 24 years from now. The solid waste disposal fund is $34,461,790. The payoff is 2043. When you add those two figures together, as of October 4th, 2019, the bonded debt of the city of Bristol, Virginia Now, there are other items that can enter into that figure, but that's the two biggest figures that we have. Now, this means, gentlemen, if we do not borrow anything, not one penny, from October 4th for the next 24 years, we owe $106 million that has to be paid back during that time. That is not very comforting to me. We are in a crisis and we must stay the course. Now, the previous council set up a very, very good course, well thought through, intelligent, depth. It was good. Your responsibility is to be the stewards of what they set up. The reason we have gotten one step forward, no more than that, Mayor, please to, no more than that, is because the previous council put a property tax that we all hated. I'm included in that. But it was that property tax that saved the day with Moody's and the state of Virginia. The state of Virginia issued a report very recently saying that we are doing better. They didn't say we were doing well or we're over the hump. They just said we're doing a little bit better. That's all, no more. Now, crisis spending is what we are going to have to deal with. The jail and the fire hall down there have serious structural problems. That is a crisis. The jail itself is a crisis. A new school is not a crisis. It is a want. It is a want. It is not a crisis. That can come at another time. The council was very generous with the school board. They gave money for raises for the teachers and rightfully so. And then came back with another $200,000. They were very generous, but that new school is not a crisis situation, period. One word will solve it. No, come back next year in the budget session. We'll see what happens then. We're in a state of flux. There are items that have been figured into this budget right now that you all are going to be dealing with tonight, as a matter of fact. But, gentlemen, let me urge you. I urge you as a citizen, as a resident, as the most knowledgeable person you know, I urge you to stay the course. Stay the course. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, regular agenda items. Item one, proclamation recognizing adverse childhood experiences Awareness Month Staff Report.
Counsel, this is a joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee, that recognize the impact of adverse childhood experiences that these experiences have on childhood development and growth.
Alright, item two is reading of the proclamation. I know I read the last proclamation we did and just judging by how long this is, I'm gonna let you go ahead and take this one.
Gee, thanks. A proclamation recognizing adverse childhood experience Awareness Month, October 2019. Whereas Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia recognize that a strong community depends on supporting the development of strong brain architecture and supporting the health and wellbeing of our children to create a foundation for lifelong health and responsible citizenship. And whereas adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, are stressful or traumatic experiences, including abuse, neglect, family dysfunction and community violence, which can disrupt the safe, stable nurturing environments children need to thrive. And whereas ACEs can cause toxic stress, which can affect brain development and lead to a lifetime of physical, mental, economic, educational and social challenges and have been linked to public health problems such as obesity, addiction, heart disease and hypertension. And whereas the economic burden of ACEs in Tennessee and Virginia is seen in direct medical costs and lost employee productivity, and Bristol's continued prosperity relies on our current action to prevent these adverse experiences whenever possible and to mitigate their impact when they cannot be prevented. And whereas trauma-informed care is not a therapy or intervention but a principle-driven cultural change process aimed at shifting communities' mental model to be more empathetic and resiliency-focused. And whereas adopting innovative collaborative trauma-informed approaches in workplaces, schools, communities and governments can prevent or mitigate mental, emotional, physical and/or social issues among those impacted by toxic stress. And whereas numerous professionals in the Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia area have received trauma-informed care training and in 2019, through Bristol's promise launched a trauma-informed care community as best practice, following recommendations to do so by the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. And now therefore be it resolved that Margaret Fire Robin, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, and Neil Osborn, Mayor of Bristol, Virginia, do hereby recognize the month of October 2019 as Adverse Childhood Experiences Awareness Month. In Bristol, to raise awareness and encourage all residents to become informed about the impact of ACEs and toxic stress, learning about trauma-informed approaches that promote prevention, healing and resilience in children, adults and communities to build a stronger and healthier Bristol. The Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia city council members along with partners, the Bristol Promise Trauma-Informed Care Community, Tennessee Department of Children's Services, Ballot Health, Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth, United Way of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia, and others encourage community leaders, business owners, pastors, educators, coaches and the public to participate in upcoming educational opportunities by attending the events and trainings during the month of October for ACEs Awareness Month. Together as city leaders and community partners, this proclamation indicates our commitment to exploring ways to make Bristol a resilient community for all of its citizens.
Alright, thank you. So we're looking for a council motion and a second on this.
I would make a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Alright, motion is made by the Vice Mayor and second by Mr. Farnham. And if there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. So I'd just like to recognize everyone who's in attendance for this. Melissa Roberts, Mayor Fire Robin from Bristol, Tennessee, and maybe Becky Haas with Ballot Health is here, among others. If you all want to come up and get a picture and get your proclamation.
I guess I should take a picture.
First of all, thank you all for recognizing the importance of adverse childhood experiences and how they have lifelong effects on people. The study that was done in the mid-'90s shows that once you get to an ACE score of six, you have a possibility of taking 20 years off of your life. So you all, through Mr. Ead's office, have signed up to do a longer presentation a little bit later this month that'll be done here in the council chambers during one of your sessions. I'd like to invite each of you and the community to several events that we have going on throughout this month. This coming Thursday, in conjunction with the Push Film Festival, we're going to be showing Paper Tigers. This is a movie that is about a school out of rural Washington State that went to a trauma-informed care event and came back and used those within their schools and saw an increase in graduation rates, saw a decrease in substance abuse, a decrease in absenteeism, and really turned the school around. So we'll be doing that this Thursday at noon at Theater Bristol and also a showing at 6:00 PM. Following the 6:00 PM, we're going to be doing a panel discussion. So we'll have members of the Bristol, Virginia School Board or the Bristol, Virginia Schools, Bristol, Tennessee Schools to talk about what they're doing. So it's a great way to come out and kind of hear what the schools are doing for trauma-responsive care. On October 24th, we're going to be doing a training with Ms. Becky Haas, who is kind of the queen of trauma-responsive care in our region. She started this with the Johnson City Police Department and then moved it into the community. She's been invited by the First Lady of Delaware to help them with their trauma response. She's been invited to train the entire Oklahoma City Police Department. So she's going to be doing a training at the Summit Companies out on Volunteer Parkway on the 24th from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM. All of these are open to the public and they're free. And I hope that you and everybody in this room will join us to get a jumpstart on adverse childhood experiences and becoming trauma-responsive community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a second to compliment the Bristol, Virginia city school system. They are way ahead of all of us with working on this. We really admire what they're doing. They have fully embraced and trained and recognized that. And also, I know that City Manager Eads and the council are concerned about children and the future of our community and are also interested in what can be done with helping folks have jobs and good livings, et cetera. And this is part of that, so really appreciate it. Also, we'll say there's several folks here. The folks here from Mount Rogers are part of our trauma-informed care community. So we're excited we're here at the same time. And also, Jackie Nofflin in the back is part of it too. So we're really excited about what's happening here and we feel like we're helping it to really grow and spread across our whole region. So appreciate you all a lot. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item two is a proclamation recognizing Good Pasture Motor Company for their 100th anniversary Staff Report.
Counsel, this is a proclamation to recognize Good Pasture Motor Company. They will celebrate their 100th anniversary later this month. And this proclamation recognizes and thanks them for their commitment to the city of Bristol. It's not very often that we get to recognize a business that has been in business for 100 years, not only in this locality but just about anywhere else in the United States. So that's a tremendous honor and a pleasure for you all to be here in Bristol. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Since you read the last one, I'll take this one.
Which is short.
By no coincidence, is much shorter. Whereas the city council of Bristol, Virginia recognizes that Good Pasture Motor Company has been a customer-oriented organization since its founding by Frank Goodpastor Sr. and his father-in-law, S.T. Copenhaver Sr. in August of 1919 in Bristol, Virginia. And whereas, in the five-state regions surrounding the tri-cities, Good Pasture has been synonymous with trucks, truck parts and truck service, with a customer list that reads like a who's who in the Southern Appalachians spanning the greater part of the 20th century. And whereas Good Pasture Motor Company started business truck transportation, was just getting established, paved roads were the exception. It was not until 1926 that a fully-loaded two-ton truck was driven from New York to San Francisco. And Good Pasture had been in business meeting the transportation needs of the area for many years already. And whereas the owners of Good Pasture Motor Company, past and present, have been deeply involved with service to the city of Bristol, Virginia, through participation in boards, committees and the Chamber of Commerce. Therefore be it resolved that Neil Osborn, Mayor, and the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, do hereby recognize the contributions of Good Pasture Motor Company to our community and congratulate them for their 100th year in business in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Looking for a motion and a second.
Again, I would make a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
So motion from the Vice Mayor and second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion on this?
Just, as the city manager said, it is rare to have a business 100 years in operation anywhere, especially here in the city. And just thank Good Pastures for what they have done over the years and continue to do. They're really good business partners in our community in a lot of different ways and I appreciate it.
Alright, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. So I just want to recognize the Good Pasture family that's here and if you all want to come up and get a picture also, we'll do that.
I'd like to thank the city of Bristol for this proclamation. And I'd have to say that it's rare for a company to be this old in this town or this country, particularly when it's in the same family. But we stand on the shoulders of the founder, Frank Goodpastor Sr. and Frank Goodpastor Jr. and Archie's dad, Archie Hubbard Jr., plus a legion of dedicated employees over the years. Of course, the customers pay our bills. And since our founding in August of 1919, customers have been recognized as the lifeblood of our business. Our commitment is to deal honestly, treat people with respect and bring value to the transaction. Our long corporate life is testimony to that commitment. Thank you all.
Thank you. Alright, item three is a presentation from the Mount Rogers Health District. I believe it's Dr. Shelton? Alright.
Mayor, council, Mr. Eads, thank you all for having us this evening. We wanted to bring some education to the city about the problems of substance abuse in our population and in the region and want to focus somewhat on the problem but more so on the solutions of what we can do together as a community to help with this. So Bristol is not alone in battling the substance use crisis that has hit our nation and the United States. 115 people die every day from an opioid overdose. That's almost five per hour. Virginia, almost 3.5 people die every day from an opioid overdose and in Tennessee, the same. Nationally, a baby is born every 25 minutes withdrawing from an opioid, a condition called neonatal abstinence syndrome. So the problem that we have is a problem of addiction. Addiction is a very powerful problem that is recognized as a chronic disease. And we want to talk a little bit about some of the effects of this addiction in our community. Most people think about opioids, they think about overdose deaths. And in Virginia, that has risen over the last three years substantially. Regionally, when we talk about addiction, we talk about overdose deaths, we talk about the rates per 100,000 of the population. Most of the deaths in our region currently are from prescription opioids, but we are seeing a rise in what we call the synthetic opioids, which are heroin and fentanyl. From 2007 to 2017, in the Mount Rogers Health District, which spans eight localities, we see about 16 to 30 deaths per year. In most localities such as Bristol, we see anywhere from one to three deaths per year just from prescription opioids. As you can see in Virginia and then the Mount Rogers District and in Bristol compared, again, prescription opioids and synthetic opioids are somewhat close to the state rates. In Bristol, over the last seven years, we've had approximately 17 deaths due to both prescription and synthetic opioids. We look at another marker about opioid use with Narcan administration. Narcan is a substance that counteracts the effects. So when we look at, we don't focus only on the opioid deaths, which are very tragic by nature, but we focus on some of the other harms that come to the community. Narcan administration is a sign of opioid use in the community and you can see that Bristol has higher than state rates for Narcan administration over the last seven, eight years. We look at fentanyl overdose deaths. We don't have as many of those, but when we do have them, they are in the category by age a little higher than state rates. And also, our prescription opioids deaths also do pop higher than state rates in some of the age groups. Naloxone is a medication, also known as Narcan, that can block the effect of the opioid. So the reason that people die from opioids is because an opioid is a central nervous system depressant. It makes your body slow down all over, but specifically your brain and specifically your respiratory center. So people die from opioids literally because they stop breathing. So when you have naloxone, it binds. It's stronger than the opioid to the receptor and it binds and it actually will knock the opioid off the receptor and allow people literally to start breathing again. So it's very much so a lifesaving medication. Just a quick look at some of the overdose deaths for the state of Virginia and you'll see regionally where our concerns are. When we look at all deaths total, unnatural deaths for the state of Virginia over the last 10 years, unnatural deaths by drug overdose have now risen to be higher than either gun-related fatalities or motor vehicle fatalities. All drugs in general, we've had a twofold increase in all drug deaths over the last 10 years in the state, going from around 700 per year to over 1,400 per year. And you can see that the state is affected all over, dark colors being worse rates. All over the state, there is some effect of fatal drug overdoses. When we look at prescription opioids, which is more the drug of choice in southwest Virginia, we can see that the actual numbers of overdose deaths have not risen significantly over the last 10 years. We still see about 400 to 500 deaths per year from prescription opioids. But southwest Virginia has a higher rate of deaths from prescription opioids. We look at other substances such as heroin. We see a logarithmic increase over the last three to four years in the number of heroin deaths across the state. Thankfully, southwest Virginia not as hard-hit by this. Likewise, fentanyl, again, a logarithmic rise over the last three to four years in fentanyl deaths. Also, there are things called fentanyl analogues, which are being synthesized. And the fentanyl is generally coming out of Mexico and China, especially the analogues. They are making fentanyl analogues faster than we can make a drug test to discover them, to test them in people. And you can see that fentanyl is a great source of opioid death across the state. We do have some in southwest Virginia, not as much as some of the rest of the state. Benzodiazepines are something that are used for generally anxiety and we have a lot of anxiety prescriptions in our area. Thankfully, generally benzodiazepines are not considered a drug of death. They are more deadly when prescribed with prescription opioids, which has been a habit for many years by physicians. So southwest Virginia does see a greater risk of benzodiazepine deaths, but we've had some great education over the last few years and we are seeing less of these. Cocaine traditionally has not been slated as a drug of death. We do think, when we think about cocaine's associated with death, more of a stimulant-type activity like heart attacks or strokes or something of that nature. But we have seen a rise in the last few years of cocaine deaths and these are generally because these have been cut with fentanyl. So they're putting fentanyl into the cocaine and people are dying as a result of the fentanyl exposure. Again, southwest Virginia not quite as hard-hit as some of the rest of the state from cocaine. Methamphetamine though, you're probably more aware of. Traditionally, methamphetamine, again, being a stimulant, has not been a drug of death. Usually less than 10 deaths per year. When people made methamphetamine in their backyard, toxic as it was, at least they knew what they were getting. Now that most of the meth is coming out of Mexico, we're seeing much purer meth and stronger meth, but they're also getting it cut in with the fentanyl and we've had a logarithmic rise of methamphetamine deaths in the state of Virginia, over 120 last year. And southwest Virginia is particularly hard-hit by these methamphetamine deaths. When people buy drugs off the street, they don't know what they're getting and so they're more likely to die from those drugs. So we look at not only deaths in our region, which are very tragic, but we look at some of the other harms that come as a result of this. Neonatal abstinence syndrome is when babies are born who have been exposed to opioids during the mother's pregnancy and then they go into withdrawal when they're born. Bristol has higher than state rates over double than the state of Virginia. I will tell you though, that these numbers are low. These numbers are just the babies born in Virginia. Most of the babies in Bristol are born in Tennessee. The latest numbers that I have are quadruple that for the number of, the rate of NAS babies from Bristol. So we are very significantly hit by this. When you talk to your school system, you'll hear it as well. So NAS births in Bristol are generally higher than the state rates. And you can see that southwest Virginia has been particularly hit by NAS births. We also look at things like HIV. HIV rates are higher in substance users. Thankfully, in southwest Virginia and specifically in Bristol, we have not seen a rise in HIV attributable to substance use at this point, but it will often follow. The lifetime cost of treating someone with HIV if they get contracted at age 35 is over $300,000 for life. over $300,000 for lifetime cost. If you do look at the ages of new HIV cases, though, we do tend to have higher than state rates in some of those age groups, generally in the 25 to 45 range. We also look at hepatitis C, and this is where we do hit much higher than state rates for our hepatitis C. Nationally, hepatitis C is recognized as an indicator of substance use in a community. Our rates are quadruple plus over state rates for hepatitis C in Bristol, and this is a regional effect as well. A few, you could see again Bristol rates are higher than state rates. A few fun facts about hepatitis C, or actually not so fun, but 25% of people who inject drugs will become positive for hepatitis C within two years. Hepatitis C will actually linger on surfaces for over three weeks, which means it's very transmittable, and there is no vaccine for hepatitis C. We do have vaccines for hepatitis A and hepatitis B, but not for hepatitis C yet. And if someone gets hepatitis C, the good news is they can be cured from their hepatitis C. Average cost of treatment is 100,000 to almost $300,000 for a treatment. And if they get treated and don't go into recovery, they can contract hepatitis C again. In Virginia, you do not have to be sober to get treated for your hepatitis C, so you can still be using and still be treated. When we look at hepatitis C regionally and across the state, we can see that in 2011 it was mostly confined to southwest Virginia, but there has been a growth of this across the state over the last several years. And again, darker is worse, and southwest Virginia has higher hepatitis C rates. The CDC did a study in 2016 that looked at 220 counties, that looked at every county across the United States. The top five counties, the top 5% of counties, which was 220 across the state, were selected for those at greatest risk for HIV and hepatitis C. Virginia had eight states at risk for HIV and hepatitis C outbreak. The closest one to us is With County, but the rest are in southwest Virginia, Lee, Wise, Dickinson, Buchanan, Russell, and Tazewell. There's also Patrick County. So we had only 5% of counties across Virginia were on this list. 50% of counties in Tennessee were on this list. 45% of counties in Kentucky and West Virginia were on this list. We are inundated with hepatitis C around us. Hepatitis A is something you may have heard a little bit more about recently. This is also, has high-risk groups, including the substance use in community, but others can get it as well, especially once it becomes, once it gets into a community. Hepatitis A is not a substance using like a bloodborne pathogen like B and C, it is more of the fecal-oral transmission route. So this is something that if you have shared food or eaten this food that has been prepared by someone with hepatitis A, you can get hepatitis A. It is quite contagious. Unfortunately, Mount Rogers District has the distinction of having the highest number of hepatitis A cases in the state right now. We know that this is attributable to our proportion of substance users. We also were concerned about food handlers and underwent an extensive restaurant education campaign. Most of the cases of hepatitis A in our district have been in Bristol, Washington, and Smith Counties. Through the efforts of this educational campaign as well as vaccination campaign, we have thankfully seen a decline, knock on wood, of hepatitis A cases in the last few weeks, and we're happy about that. But we are still vigilant and on the lookout for how we can help with hepatitis A. When we look at opioid burden across the state of Virginia, again, southwest Virginia is higher hit than that, and it has a lot to do with the harms we've already talked about, NAS births, hepatitis C rates, opioid deaths rates. We know that there is a cross to every locality in southwest Virginia, and especially in Bristol as well as the others. There is a cost to business. A lot of businesses, if you talk with them, have difficulty finding people who will, employees to pass drug screens. When we look at the healthcare effects, we look at the number of overdose responses, EMS response times, emergency room care. We look at some of the harms just associated with the physical injecting of the drugs, including cellulitis, abscesses, and bacterial endocarditis, and the cost to our health system for that. If you think about the cost of treatment for hepatitis C, at 40-plus cases per year newly diagnosed just in Bristol, that would be a cost of $4 to $12 million per year just to treat the number of hepatitis C cases that are positive every year. Additionally, jail costs, and I was hoping the article from the paper would come out with all the costs from the jail, but you can read about it probably tomorrow. I know they've been looking at Sullivan County Jail and the effect of substance use and the overcrowding issues, and I know that the Bristol jails had a difficult time with this as well. But you know, as a council in a city, how much you've spent on jail costs, how much your costs have increased over the last five years resulting from substance use. We look at DSS. Over 500 cases of abuse and neglect per year currently, up from years past. They relate that 90 to 95% of these have some sort of substance use in the home, even if that's not what they were initially presented for. And if you look at therapeutic foster care, it's $46,000 just for a six-month stint of therapeutic foster care per child. We look at our schools, we look at the impact in the schools, we look at referrals less than 20, 15 years ago, and now they're getting 50 to 60 per year. I will tell you with our rates of NAS, when you think about how a child with NAS who has no behavioral regulation, how that looks in a classroom full of children, when you have, you know, in years past, a couple of troublemakers, and now you have a whole classroom full of children who cannot regulate themselves, it impacts the education of every single one of our students. So the problem, as I've alluded to, is addiction. So addiction is the state of being enslaved to a habit or practice or something that is psychologically or physically habit-forming to such an extent that its cessation causes severe trauma. We think about characteristics of addiction being inability to abstain, impairment of behavioral control, cravings for the drugs or reward experiences, diminished recognition that you even have a problem, and a dysfunctional emotional response. Addiction affects approximately 10% of our population. It is classified as a chronic disease, much like depression, because being a kind of an illness of the mind that's sometimes harbored or wrapped your hands around as far as how do you treat that. But we also, diabetes affects approximately 10% of our population as well. How does addiction start? It's a little bit different for everyone. Sometimes it's just bad circumstances and bad timing, you're in your environment, you have an opportunity, kids out partying, that sort of a thing. Part of it is genetic. Why is it that some people will have a surgery and get a bottle of pain pills to go home from their surgery, and by the end of them, they actually be addicted to opioids versus some people take the whole bottle and stop them without any withdrawal symptoms whatsoever? What's the difference genetically there? We need to do further research and looking into this as far as how we can better treat our patients as physicians. We have a lot of work to do as well. We think about traumatic experiences, and this goes back to the ACEs. People are looking for a way out. They've had a hard childhood, they just want to be numb, they don't want to think about it anymore. How can we address that problem better? So again, coming back to the ACEs, and I didn't know Becky and the team would be here tonight, but we think about adverse childhood experiences, and how is this affecting all of our children and the generations that are coming up? We know now that there are many grandparents raising children right now, and what effect is that having on our society? So we talk about abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. If 64% of adults have at least one ACE, and 12% have four or more, if you have increased risk, if you have increasing ACEs, you have, do have increased risk for smoking, addiction, obesity, depression, diabetes, suicide, addiction, and other health-related abnormalities. The higher your score, the increased your risk. If you have an ACE score of six or more, you have a life span that can be shortened by 20 years. We talk about the resiliency, and hopefully, this is ACEs Proclamation Month, you'll have an opportunity to learn a lot more about this. But we look about what can we do as a community to provide resilience for our children and for our young parents suffering, and we'll talk about, and you'll hear more about that from the resiliency team. But we talk about competence, building confidence in them, having to make social connections, having mentors that will help them with their character, coping skills, how do they control their behavioral regulation? Ooh, wrong one. Okay. So again, we know there's a problem. What can we do for solutions? Thankfully, there are a lot of great solutions ongoing out there, and I want to highlight on those and then talk about what we can do as a community otherwise. So one of our primary things is what we're doing right now, education, making people aware that there is a problem. A lot of people, if you talk to them, they have been affected personally by substance use in their family or in a coworker or coworker's family. So we like people to know that they are not alone when we talk about substance use or addiction, and we need our community to know that. Again, decrease the stigma, have people talk about it, help them, have them get into help. There's also a big push to get unneeded medication out of our homes, out of our medicine boxes, and into proper disposal. There is a Drug Take Back Day, and you have one of these in your packets. They happen every April and October. We have one coming up October the 26th at the Food City. And any medications that are not needed in the house, and we want everyone in the community to do this, is to take all your unneeded medications and dispose of them properly, environmentally soundly. We don't want you flushing them, we don't want you putting them in your garbage, we don't want them in the water, we don't want them in our landfill, we want them to be disposed of properly. There are additionally drug drop boxes, and there is one at the Sheriff's Office here in Bristol and every locality in southwest Virginia, where if you don't happen to make the drug drop date, there are locations all over southwest Virginia where we want people to dispose of environmentally friendly their medications. Additionally, there are packets manufactured, called a TARA, which people can put unused medication in. You can, there's a little substance in here, and you can put a little warm water and swish it around, and it will completely environmentally safely eliminate that product such that no one can draw anything out of it. We have packets that we'll put at the back of the room today. If anybody wants these packets for drug disposal, we would encourage you to take them. We have them available at all of our health departments right down here in the street, anytime anybody needs them. So we really want to advocate for proper drug disposal in our community. Additionally, our healthcare providers, as I mentioned, physicians, we, there are ongoing campaigns across Virginia, Tennessee, and many other states about how do we prescribe more smartly? More smartly is probably not a good term. How do we prescribe better as far as our drug use? And what about research for alternate pain medication treatments? We don't want people to be in pain, we want to treat them better, but we want to treat them such that they don't have an, form an addiction or have other problems from that. We also want to educate our youth. We have programs in our schools, we actually have a grant going on right now that Bristol is participating in, which is actually to decrease our teenage pregnancy rates, but it actually focuses on risk reduction. And as such, it speaks to substance use, and how can we make an intervention even in the middle school to have these young students thinking about their futures and what will substance use do for that or take away? We also have some after-school programming. So when we think about prevention, that would be what we would like to do. We would like to prevent as many people from entering into addiction as we can. But for those who are already in addiction, there is hope and there is promise. Treatment for addiction is very hard fought, but it can be successful. We have to have community support, we have to have family support, we have to have community programs for them, and the individual has to want that as well for themselves. But we think about treatment for addiction just like we think about diabetes, depression. We don't say with somebody with diabetes, "Well, you can't ever eat cake again, just go, you know, make smart choices." That doesn't work. We want them to make smart choices, but we also want them to exercise and take their medication. Same thing for depression. We use counseling, exercise, and medication-assisted treatment. So for addiction, there is counseling, support groups, as well as medication-assisted treatment. And the state has gone a long way to increase reimbursements for physicians to do proper counseling and medication-assisted treatment. So we're seeing an increase in these in our community, and we do want to see an increase in the right kind of medication-assisted treatment services. Revive is a program, I mentioned the medication naloxone, which can bring back a life. We have revive programs that we can teach in a community, and we would love to teach more here in Bristol, we've already done some. But this is something where we show people how to recognize an overdose to addiction, excuse me, an overdose to an opioid, and then we can actually give them Narcan so that they could administer this to a loved one. There are other things that we can do to reduce some of the harms in our community. Recovery Court is a wonderful thing that Bristol does participate in. This is a thing that can help to decrease some of the overcrowding in your jails as far as you're trying to winnow out those who are, have substance arrests because they're dealing in substances versus those who just really have addiction and need to have help for their addiction and get them into treatment. We also need many more support groups in our area, and we work with the faith-based community and the ministerial associations to increase our number of NAIA meetings, and there are other Celebrate Life and other kinds of recovery meetings in the community we would like to advocate for. NAS, we have regional, we have work groups that we work with our agencies about plans for NAS, helping to build support groups for substance-using pregnant women and then the families after they're born to get them into supportive services. We also have a school work group and a new research opportunity that we'll be working with, an NIH grant to look at this more closely. We want to provide birth control so that substance-using pregnant women don't get pregnant and have babies until they're ready and in a good place for that. HIV, we refer to treatment, there is pre-exposure prophylaxis. Hepatitis C, we want to be able to refer people for treatment and also reduce used needles. There are many good community things going on right now. We've been working as a community on a HERSA grant for planning grant, and we have many agencies from across southwest Virginia and Upper East Tennessee working collaboratively for community programs. We also had a U.S. Chamber of Event, Chamber of Commerce event back in the spring about sharing solutions and in getting a lot of this workforce into better employment, because a lot of the reason they go back to their substance using is because they don't have any hope for a job or for a future. So we've been working quite a bit on that angle as far as getting them gainfully employed so that they have something to hope for. We also did receive an implementation grant to go forward and do, though we more, much more strategic planning regionally about how we can have better programs for those with substance use. And again, as I mentioned, an NIH grant to help with our NAS population, to study them, how do we help them learn, achieve, what can we do for them to have better positive long-term impacts? Comprehensive harm reduction is another public health strategy to reduce some of the negative health outcomes for people whose behaviors put them and others at risk for disease as well as injury. It helps to improve outcomes for the substance user, but also for first responders and for the community. What you need to do for a comprehensive harm reduction program is to create a point of contact where people in substance use want to come, whether or not they're quite ready for a recovery. So you create a place where they want to come, you actually do have needles for them which are clean, which you can exchange for their dirty needles, but it's more than the needles, you have a program that brings them into healthcare. You get them interested in their own health, you get them into medical services, you get them into behavioral health services, because there is a great percentage of co-occurring behavioral health problems in those with addiction. We also want to get them tested and treated for their HIV and hepatitis C, decrease our NAS births, provide vaccination. So it's a program where people can come in to begin the process of thinking about recovery. There has been great concern about comprehensive harm reduction programs and whether or not they may increase crime. In Baltimore, the studies showed that they actually had a decrease of violent crime arrests. Do they encourage drug use? No. People who enter into comprehensive harm reduction programs are about five times more likely to go into recovery. There is a safe needle disposal system, and nationally, over 90% of syringes are returned. Virginia does have a policy for this, it's a one-to-one exchange, and regionally, the programs have had more syringes returned than they actually gave out. Hepatitis C can be decreased as much as 50% in a community by these programs, so this is a very tangible step for hepatitis C reduction. In DC, they did an analysis where they would save 44 million over two years, but if you looked at Bristol and at over 40 cases of hepatitis C per year, if you prevented half of those, you would still save $2 to $6 million per year just in hepatitis C treatments. In Scott County, Indiana, they had a similar number of cases, a few more than we do as far as five to 10 cases of HIV per year, and hepatitis C about 40 to 60 cases per year. In 2015, they had an outbreak. This kind of alludes to that study that I showed you earlier about the risk for hepatitis C and HIV outbreak, but they had 183 new cases of HIV and 243 new cases of hepatitis C that year. They instituted a syringe services program and were able to decrease their syringe sharing, and by two years later, they only had nine new cases back to their baseline of HIV and 92 cases of hepatitis C. So it did show it to be an effective program for reducing the burden of hepatitis C. North Carolina has a syringe exchange program, as does Tennessee. The CDC has said that if you want to prevent a hepatitis C outbreak in your community, there are four things you need to do. Number one is test everyone who will be tested. Number two is to get them into treatment. Number three is to have medication-assistant programs for people to begin getting treatment for their addiction, and number four is to have a syringe services program. Smith County decided last year that they had a large burden of substance use in their community and many other harms associated, and they decided as one of their solutions that they wanted to have a comprehensive harm reduction program in the county there. The first participant started in January of this year, we have over 74 participants thus far. It is a very structured program, identification card. The community has to be on board, law enforcement, city council, the citizens have to be on board with this. We do have a trauma-informed program coordinator and a peer recovery specialist. We've been able to link people to the programs we discussed as far as getting their vaccinations, their hepatitis C treatments, getting them onto birth control, but also social supports, housing, food banks, and even into recovery services. In that program, we have had three people go into, enter into recovery. We've had one person who has finished their hepatitis C treatment, one person awaiting test results. There has been one overdose reversal with naloxone. They have been connected to medical services and to mental health services. So for Bristol, where we would like to start is with a community health assessment, and this is when we gather our community stakeholders and the agencies of the community and say, "What are your concerns for this community?" And what is, agencies, can we do to help our community? How, what kind of solutions can we provide to Bristol when it comes to the problem of substance abuse and other problems that this council decides are of significance? We would like to plan a kickoff meeting, begin collecting data, have people decide on what are their top priorities, as well as beginning as well as begin implementing strategies. Thank you very much for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do you have any questions?
No questions, but just to thank you for coming and presenting tonight.
You're most welcome. Thank you for letting us.
And I'd like to say, I agree with you that this is a major problem from, from whichever perspective you look at it, whether it be quality of life, economic development, public health. I was actually at a conference this morning with Steve Williams, who's the mayor of Huntington, West Virginia. And I see you've probably read up on him. They had, I think New York Times classified them as the epicenter of the opioid epidemic. And they went and did some, some really forward-thinking proactive things to kind of deal with it. So, I appreciate y'all bringing this to us and giving this information. And we'll work with you however we can to.
Well, thank you. We look forward to working with the community.
Thank you. We are going to take a five-minute recess before we get into the next thing. We are back. So, next item we have got on the agenda is a public hearing regarding three scheduled residential demolitions. We'll go ahead and open the hearing. Staff comments.
Counsel, these are targeted properties which are vacant and abandoned and neglected by the owners. And they've been determined to be beyond repair. The city building inspector concurred with this assessment. They are deemed unsafe and hazardous to the public. They also contribute to black within the city neighborhoods and gateways and may lead to decreased surrounding property values. Additionally, these structures can be hazardous to aggregate children and provide havens for vagrants and drug use. Attempts to locate the property owners have proven unsuccessful. Due diligence has been performed and recorded in order to identify and contact all property owners. All property owners have been contacted by mail and given sufficient response time to either correct property issues or initiate demolition themselves. CDBG funding is being used to perform demolitions. Those properties demolished by the city will have liens filed for the cost of the demo activities. The properties to be, to be demolished are 804 Madison Street, 808 Buckner Street, and 105 East Mary Street. The demolition of these properties has been advertised in the Bristol Herald-Coolier. And licensed and insured contractors have been solicited through a competitive bid process to perform the, perform the demolitions. The city manager and city attorney and the council have been informed of these demolitions through the consent agenda approved by city council on August the 13th, 2019, at a regularly-scheduled city council meeting. A public notice forbids. And the scheduled public hearing ran in the Bristol Herald-Coolier on September 9th, 2019. And a notice of demolition in the scheduled public hearing ran in the Bristol Herald-Coolier on September 17th, 2019. No actions required tonight. This is only a public hearing.
All right, thank you. It looks like no one has signed up to comment at the hearing. So, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. So, item five is a public hearing on the issuance of general obligation notes for the purchase of real property. Hearing is open. Staff comments.
Counsel, this is a, for the financing of what used to be the Virginia Employment Commission building. It's an amount not to exceed $650,000. We anticipate the note to be for no more than $611,000 or within about that, or within that range. This will be used for the acquisition of the property, which will now, future, in the future house the Department of Social Services and the property is located at 192 Bristol Road. A public hearing was advertised on September the 23rd and September 30th in the Bristol Herald-Coolier. Counsel has discussed the building purchase and purchase options at the August 27th, September 10th, and September 24th meetings.
All righty, thank you. So, we do have one person signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. What's the total APR of the debt, including expenses?
I think it's 3.39%, if I'm not mistaken.
I saw that was the interest rate. I didn't know if there were other expenses beyond that.
I think the other expenses we'll be paying cash for.
Okay, but that still goes to the total expense, total cost of the debt?
Right. I'm, off the top of my head, I can't tell you what the APR is. I know the rate's 3.39%.
What's the rate, do you know, of the, that we're currently generating on investments through the Treasury Office?
Roughly 2 to 2.5% depending on the day.
Okay, so this would be costing us roughly 1 1/4% more than what we would be generating?
Roughly.
Okay. Considering the city has the wherewithal to pay cash, I would recommend making the best financial decision with the little, lowest total cost, including opportunity cost. In this case, it does seem that it will, would cost a little bit less to the city to pay cash rather than to get debt because it will cost us about 1 1/2%. And I've heard no persuasive argument. I heard, I've heard arguments, but not what I would consider to be persuasive arguments, not to pay cash. I would rather do what will cost the city less. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. So, we will close the hearing. And item six is resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation notes of the city of Bristol, Virginia. Staff report.
Counsel, this is the resolution that you have before you in regards to allowing us to borrow the funds for the purchase of the building. As I've previously stated, the interest rate's 3.39%. It's a 10-year note, and we have the ability to pay that note off early as well.
All right, thank you very much. So, no one has signed up for public comment on item six, so reading of the resolution.
Counsel, I'd ask that the motion be made that, read this by caption only. It's been posted for sufficient time and sufficient copies have been made available to the public.
So, do we have a motion to read this by caption only?
Yeah, I would make that motion to read the resolution by caption only, given the length of the resolution as well as its availability.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by the vice mayor and a second by Mr. Farnum. Do we need to take a roll call on this, on this as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Farnum?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right, if you would read by caption only the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the issuance and the sale of general obligation notes of the city of Bristol, Virginia, and providing for the form details on payment thereof.
All right, so we're now looking for a motion and a second on the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution, adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Hartley. Counsel discussion.
I don't think this city needs to be going in any more debt. We have the means to pay cash for this building and get it behind us and move on. And to go into more debt right now is just, it's not what this city needs. Everybody knows our financial situation. It was spoke of tonight by Ms. Marty. And we don't know the future. Everybody's thinking there's one big apple going to drop on, on this city and cure our problems. We don't know that that's going to happen. We need to be diligent, and we need to not go in any more debt when we have the money. Second, where we can just write a check for this.
Well, we just, we have discussed this previously, but, you know, to me, again, part of that is not knowing the future. And I think right now, it's important for us to keep cash on hand because there's a lot of other things. For example, with this building, we talked about, we don't know what the total cost for DSS to move there is. My understanding is the state will reimburse us for some of that. We've talked about potentially renovating the building they're in. We have no idea what the cost of that is. Or if, if we don't, whether we demolish it. So, there's other expenses outside of just purchasing this building that we need cash on hand. There are things that are continually coming up to this council that haven't been budgeted for, that we need cash on hand for. I can think of several of those. For example, you know, we need to do something to the baseball stadium. That's not been budgeted for. And all of these things that come up, I mean, there is a city manager contingency, but that's nowhere near enough. Plus, we need to, to be setting money aside to deal with our, our coming debt and other emergencies, rainy day, whatever we want to call it. The thing I like about this, it's a 10-year note, but it's an early payoff. And the first payment, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Eads isn't due until next year. So, we can budget, we could pay early and pay this off if, if we find ourselves in a.
I want to correct that. Right before this meeting started, we had some late-breaking news from line counsel. And actually, the first payment is going to be due 30 days after closing. We'll do it on a monthly basis. And that's simply because it's going to be, it costs the city less to pay it on a monthly basis than it will on a yearly basis.
Okay. Well, it's, but still, yet, if we find ourselves in a position at the end of the year, I mean, there's nothing preventing us from paying this off earlier. So, you know, buying the, the, the building up there, you know, is it needed? Yes, but I mean, it, it came totally out of the blue. It wasn't budgeted for. This gives us time to, to budget for that in the future. And like I say, if it looks like at some point we're, we're ahead, we can do that. But I think right now that this would be the best way, I feel, moving forward.
I definitely agree with what, what both of you all are saying. I see both sides of it. And I've kind of been on both sides of this for a little bit. At first, I was on the side of, okay, we do have the cash. Let's just write a check and buy it. And then, I got to thinking more about, well, when I got here, I learned quickly about how much little cash the city had just a few years ago and how we've done a good job of building that up. You know, Mr. Hartley mentioned things like the baseball stadium. You know, we've been talking a lot about the schools. And we can use a lot of cash for things needed at the schools. We've also talked about the jail and the upcoming debt payments associated with the falls. So, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of borrowing, you know, $50 million to start some kind of new development. But with this, it's, you know, $600 and some thousand dollars. We know roughly what our payment is going to be. We can always pay it off early. And we've talked about some other ways we can try to save in some other areas to offset that yearly payment that we'll have going forward. So, I'm on the, the side of the fence now. You know, we, we keep our cash. You know, we hold on to it for emergencies and for other things that are coming up that we know about. And we just, we get this building because it's definitely an upgrade for the offices that these folks are currently in.
You know, I, I understand the allure of wanting to pay cash for it. But, but kind of like Mr. Farnum and Mr. Hartley have said, you know, you, you've got, we have a finite amount of money set aside for whether it be the baseball field, whether it be the jail, whether it be inmate housing, cost increases. Or, you know, just the other day, we all of a sudden had $86,000 more we had to give to the school system for, for maintenance people that we weren't expecting. So, there, there are always unexpected things that cannot be financed. In, in this case, we have the flexibility to be able to finance this. And it's, it's not a large amount of money compared to what we've, what other councils have done in the past. So, so it makes the most sense to me to be able to finance it and us be able to keep this money on hand for projects in the future that we might have that we cannot finance. So, so that's where I'm at. And, you know, I had, I had had some concerns about buying the building to start with. But, you know, it was a good opportunity for us to have it and to upgrade a city office that certainly needed. And we've had some discussions about moving a different city office to the social services building. So, hopefully, we'll be able to kill two birds with one stone with this. So, so I, I think it's going to be a good opportunity for us to move the office up there. And I think we should go ahead and do the, do the financing on it. Is there any other discussion?
I just, once again, I'm going to say it's a mistake adding to the debt. We're already paying how many millions a year right now just in interest? Just in interest, no principal. It's over $2 million. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And we are going to add to that. Now, if we was a physically responsible, responsible city, what could we be doing with two additional million dollars that we are just squandering on interest because of bad decisions? And we're going to add to that tonight. It's not the right thing. It's not right.
But I would, you know, none, none of us up here got us into that extra $2 million. I'd say that first. What's the interest going to cost us addition? What are we going to be paying additional with interest here to finance this as opposed to buying it?
Do you run that by me again?
So, with the interest that, you know, we're financing, we're going to be paying the 3.39% interest?
Correct.
How much additional are we paying for this building over and above if we just wrote a check for $611?
I'll give you that number here in just a second. It's 10 years at 3 what?
3.39%.
3.39%. The building's going to cost us $767,296. And that is total interest of another $117,296.96 over the course of the life. And the odds of us paying it off early is slim. And localities do not work like that.
Let's see, give it to you. So, 611 and it was 3.39%.
Well, I was going to say, you know, if we finance it now and we hold on to our cash, you know, if it's a case where it's a 10-year note, you know, could we possibly revisit it at the end of this fiscal year and the end of next fiscal year, depending on if we have a good year or a bad year? If we have good years, we could look at making additional principal payments to it. And we don't have to take 10 years to pay it off and pay all that interest. Maybe we pay it off in three years or four years or something like that.
You see, I felt like, I feel like if, if that was this council's plan to be more physically responsible, we wouldn't be financing the whole entire dollar amount. We would be setting aside X dollar to pay down on it and then finance a, a number with a plan to pay it off in three to five years. But to go into this 100% financing, it is not going to be paid off anytime soon.
But we, there are still going to be additional costs around this whole project. This whole project just come up out of the blue. It wasn't discussed during any of the budget. It just come up out of the blue. I'm not saying it's, it's, that it's not needed. But I mean, there, if you want to be responsible, you talk about these things in budget form during the budget process. That's, all these things that are popping up is what, why we need this extra cash on hand. Because there are things that haven't been accounted for, and you can't account for everything. You said that yourself just a few minutes ago. So, that's why we need this. It, I think, you know, we can look back at this later and see. But, you know, I mean, I, at first, I was thinking, yeah, maybe put down a little bit of money. But if you're going to go in and try to renovate that for other offices, what's that cost? You can't borrow that money. That, you've got to pay for that in cash. So, where's that coming from? I mean.
I think when this opportunity came up to buy the building, all five of us, I think we agreed that the building was a good deal. And it's definitely an upgrade for those offices. And, but the one thing I just keep thinking about as far as how to pay for it is, I keep, because we've been talking about it a lot, I think about the schools and upcoming expenses with what needs to be done in our current school buildings. And we've been talking about the elementary schools, but also the middle school and the high school. So, that's kind of why I'm on the, the side of the fence of hanging on to our cash just because of some of those unknowns coming up soon.
Is any other discussion? All righty, call the roll, please.
Farnum?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
All right. Item seven, release from performance agreement contractual obligations for Studio Brew. Staff report.
Counsel, before I even get into the staff report, I want to address performance agreements in general. First and foremost, performance agreements do have a place for localities to use and be able to leverage certain advantages maybe over another locality to get a business to your own city as compared to going to a neighboring city. We have discussed performance agreements at length with IDA. We've discussed it internally with counsel. I've discussed it internally with staff. Performance agreements should be used when we can have an attraction of regional impact. And when I say regional impact, I don't mean the falls. And, but we have to use these performance agreements sparingly and wisely. None of us sitting here tonight were a part of the performance agreement procedures back in, when this took place. And because this performance agreement, it was entered into on June 27th, 2014. And I think that was prior to Mr. Hartley's term here as well. So, from this point forward, and I've been looking at them differently for years now, we have positioned ourselves in previous performance agreements while I've been here, specifically with American Merchant, off the top of my head, that we've protected the city in various means, either through deeds of trust or through performance bonds that the entity has to obtain in order to protect the city. This performance agreement that's before you tonight is for Studio Brew. Studio Brew has been an integral part in the revitalization of downtown Bristol. They've took a building that was in. took a building that was in, I won't say disrepair, but was in pretty bad shape, and they've turned it into a very nice building, very nice business, something that the city of Bristol can be proud of. And tonight, they are asking that this council release them from the performance agreement. This performance agreement, as I stated earlier, was signed on June 27th, 2014. However, the term did not commence until November 20th of 2015, when they opened their doors for business. The term was for five years, which will expire on November 20th of 2015. With this release of the performance agreement, they have an opportunity to diversify their business model to be more competitive within the craft beer and soda industry. In order to get the necessary funds to diversify their business, they have requested to be released from this agreement with the city. BVU Authority has agreed to release them contingent upon the city and the IDA releasing them from the agreement. BVU voted 4-0 to release them. The IDA voted 5-1 to release them. What's important to note here, in your packet, I've included several conditions that we have asked Studio Brew, Acrospire, and Pam and Eric Allen to agree to in order for that release. We met late this afternoon, once again, to try to nail down some points in regards to this obligation that they would now acquire for the remainder of the performance agreement. One thing that they're concerned about was whether or not the city wanted to have any say-so in the daily operations, the management, or any say-so over any type of transaction that they may have. I assured them that this city has done a bad enough job getting into businesses that we should have never been involved with to begin with, and the last thing that we want to do is be involved with a brewery or soda manufacturer. So, you have a list of obligations that Ms. Allen and Mr. Allen have agreed to. The only change is item C. The Allens must allow the city to review any documentation of the outside investment transaction. We had an internal discussion today. Basically, they have provided me already with the necessary information that I need, that I feel comfortable with at this point, and we would also add that the city does not intend to have any authority or decision-making capability for Studio Brew.
Alright, thank you very much. So, no one has signed up for public comment, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Would your motion be to release the performance agreement with adding the contractual obligations in this addendum with the change you just mentioned in item 3C?
That's correct.
Okay. I make a motion for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, motion for that is from Mr. Farnham, and second is from Mr. Hartley, and counsel discussion.
Well, I've, I've mentioned this before. The side of the fence I'm on is, since I've been here, and not just with this situation, but with everything, you know, I've just wanted to say, you know, what, what can we up here, what can we do to help? Whether that's sometimes getting involved with something, or sometimes it's stepping out of the way for something, what can we do to help? And in this case, it's a local business. You know, the goal is to, and, and I read the, you know, the quote in the paper, how the markets kind of changed a little bit, and they have some ideas of what they can do to continue to, to grow. And I, I think us, this is, is not really us, you know, stepping in, but in a way for us stepping out and giving them some more flexibility to, to do what they need to do. So, if that's, in a way, helping, I think it could be viewed as a good thing, where we're also still protecting the interests of the city with, with some of the language we've added in here. And is it something the city wants to get into, involve with a agreement like this with every business? No, but, but we're, we're already in it here, and, you know, there's a certain, certain benefit. It's kind of hard to measure, but this particular business is a business that provides something in downtown Bristol. Food, drink, nightlife. You know, we've worked really hard to revitalize our downtown area, so it's definitely hard to, to measure what that's worth, but it's definitely something that, if we can help them grow, and, you know, I see this as a good thing. Hopefully, this is helping, and we can all enjoy what this business provides for many years to come.
I also want to make clear that, maybe it's not been made clear to the public, but part of this agreement would require Acrospire, Studio Brew, Acrospire LLC, Studio Brew LLC, and Pam and Eric Allen to repay if certain things happen within the business or the business fails to operate through November 20th of 2020. It would require them to pay back 20% of what the tax assessed value of the building was when they received it back in 2014, which was $198,300, and 20% of the $80,000 in cash that the city provided to them. That's a total of about $55,000 that would be, that they're on the hook for. And the reason I came to that conclusion was they've performed 80% roughly of the performance agreement so far. They've got roughly 20% less, left, and so that's 20% of what was initially given to them by the city.
Yeah, and, and to me, you know, one, I first appreciate the Allens, that what they've done with that business, it was a building that had sat there for a very long time, and, and they've really done a great job renovating it and restoring it and moving kind of the downtown activity more away from State Street, back that way. So, I appreciate that. I'd say to their concern, I'll only speak for myself, but, you know, we, we don't want to get involved. In fact, we want to kind of get out of the way to let you do what you're doing, but as Mr. Eads pointed out, we do want to kind of still maintain that, and I think that's a fair compromise, you know, for, other than time, you've met the, the, everything in the agreement, so to kind of prorate it. I know a, a lot of, if you get money from federal money from the ARC or different places like that, they're, they have those clawback provisions, but they prorate them over time. So, I think that's fair, and hopefully this will allow y'all to continue to grow and expand in a different direction here in downtown.
I want to thank the, thank the city manager's office for their work on this, and thank the, thank the Allens for their investment in Bristol. I know I ran into you the other day in the hall, and I, I wouldn't shut up about the mystery pizza y'all have on your menu, which is fantastic, and I'll, I'll keep coming and getting it, you know, even though we're not involved now. Yeah, I think this is, I think this just makes sense, you know, for, for us to be kind of backing off from being involved in these type of agreements as much as we can, and, and it makes sense for you all, obviously, from a business standpoint, to, to be able to hopefully diversify what you do and, and, you know, further your business. So, so I look forward to us passing this here in just a moment. Is there any other discussion?
I was just gonna say, I, I was excited too about, well, first of all, you know, what's happened, like you said, they've taken an old building, and they fixed it up, and they are open for business, so they provide jobs, and they also produce tax revenue to the city. So, for all of that, thank you. Thank you for believing in Bristol, Virginia. And, and I was excited about hearing about, you know, kind of what the next steps are. This, my understanding is, it's the products of the root beer and the cream soda and distribution, and I'd love to be able to have people all over the place pick up and see that label that says "Made in Bristol, Virginia." So, I think that's a good thing for us.
Alrighty, very good. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Onto the consent agenda. Need a motion and a second to take action on this.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda with one minor change. On the meeting, the minutes from the meeting is September 10th, item number four. That should be Kathy Simpson, who's the CFO for Holland's Community Service, instead of Kathy Johnson.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve with the change that Mr. Hartley mentioned, so I need a second.
Second.
Alright, so, motion from Mr. Hartley and second from Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?